Ladies, gentlemen, conservatives of all ages, the 2023 Rhino Report is coming to you next week. Keep your eyes and ears open in your email boxes and in the podcast. Every year Rhino legislators up in Nashville, the ones that promised their conservative on the campaign trail, but go up there and take that PAC money and vote with the left-leaning Democrats. We're gonna call them all out in this report. Not only does it show a play-by-play of all the votes that they wish and hope that you'll never see or know about because the mainstream media in Tennessee certainly won't tell you, we got it here. And we're gonna tell you who the top five Rhinos are, both in the Senate and the House and the Rhinos of the Year, not to mention our Freedom Caucus fighters, the ones that are actually holding the line in both chambers. And our, uh, our Conservative of the Year, plus our Flame Award winners. You do not want to miss this. It's coming near you. I know everybody in the Cordell Hall Building is so excited that this puppy is coming out, and it couldn't come out at a better time than right now during this awful, terrible constituent-ignoring special session where Bill Lee is trying to infringe upon your gun rights. But take Jason Zachary's word for it. Take William Lambretth's word for it. It ain't what it appears. It ain't what it appears, uh, because in order to climb up in Republican leadership in the state of Tennessee, if you don't lick the boots, if you don't lick the boots, you will not move up the line. And so you must abandon your principles very quickly, very quickly. If you're going to make anything happen, this is Brandon Lewis with the Ten Con Big Seven Weekend Update. We have got big announcements for you. We've got stories about Governor Lee calling his special session because it's an emergency right now, right? Or do you not feel like we're in the middle of an emergency? That's what special sessions are supposed to be for. We had an emergency to give Ford Motor Company billions of dollars, and the next emergency that we've had is to make sure that we pass all these gun laws, uh, that restrict your freedoms and rights. It's funny. He never saw there, uh, being an emergency when he shut down all the schools or an emergency when kids, uh, were kicked out, or rather when small businesses were shut down. Uh, he never saw it as an emergency when your constitutional rights or your religious freedoms were being trampled. No, that was not an emergency. That was not an emergency. But this, oh yeah, you better believe it. It's a, it's a red alert for conservatism. Uh, we're gonna talk about that. Uh, his stance on gun control, Mr. Lee, was quite different, as you might imagine, before he got elected, uh, as he was trying to court votes. Uh, another way of that is called lying. A Putnam County judge threatens parents with jail time, uh, to track, to crack down on truancy problems, uh, in, in MN Nashville Police Department. From now on, Jason, we just need to put the Nashville Police Department and, uh, and the Nashville mayor say they'll get an SRO in every elementary school, but make no commitments to a timeline. We're gonna talk about, um, O'Connell and Raleigh, uh, head to runoff race in the Metro Nashville Council gets more progressive after last week's election. Tennessee Congressman condemns antisemitism, uh, of attempted school shooter only to find out that the shooter was Jewish. Funny how that works. I always go straight to the name calling. You really don't even have to know the facts. Uh, good news segment, an organization is supporting, uh, Bible curriculum in the school and much more. Brandon Lewis, the Ten Con Big Seven Weekend Update. You're gonna learn it all here, and boy buckle your seat belts because the next few weeks are gonna be terrible. Instead of doing things that are not an emergency in regular order, Rhinos are going to be telling you how this is absolutely necessary, uh, and that we have been in closed-door meetings. And if you weren't in those closed-door meetings, don't listen to people who are criticizing the legislative, uh, process that, that happened outside of public view. And don't worry that we're not gonna give this the slow, steady consideration and public comment that it means. No, we're gonna rush this all through, uh, but don't you worry. Trust us. Uh, you'll love the bill. Just wait till you read what's in it. Now, the Let's Go Brandon Tour is rolling on, uh, in McMinnville at the Warren County Reagan Day Dinner on August the 19th. Uh, yours truly will be there. It's amazing to me that we have, uh, conservative, uh, we have GOP groups in a lot of these rural counties that are truly conservative. Truly conservative, and they are so fed up with the status quo. I'll also be, uh, in Niota at the McMinn County, uh, Women's Annual Event on August 26th. So that's gonna be exciting. And so the Let's Go Brandon Tour is, is quickly coming to an end, so come see me now. Please do subscribe to our free, uh, daily e-newsletter. Just text NEWS to 423-205-5600. That is NEWS to 423-205-5600. Or you can always visit tennesseconservativenews.com and follow us everywhere. They have not shadow banned, banned us. Uh, Twitter, uh, it's called X now. X, just, just an X. Uh, Gab, Getter, Truth, uh, Rumble and MeWe, guys. And we recently saw a news story that we'll be running later that shows that Facebook is the most hated app, uh, in the state of Tennessee, the one that people trust the least and most wish they could get rid of and delete. I wonder why. Could it have anything to do with censorship? Let's get right into the news story because I have got things to do, and I'll tell you all about them in the What I'm Doing This Weekend segment, which is coming up at the end. The most riveting, most important thing that you need to know. Now, and if, if we get interrupted about halfway through this, it's because I have got Ruby, Ruby Doobie, uh, my youngest, who's a sweet darling. And daddy has had to work all day and it has driven her crazy. She has been inside watching the Flintstones and, uh, coming in and out. We've been goofing around a little bit, uh, but I've got some things to do. Uh, we're gonna go, uh, do some things. I'll tell you about it later. My wife has taken our oldest on a little bit of a trip out of town for a few days, and so it is me and Ruby. And so I am, uh, Mr. Mom, Mr. Mom for the next few days. Let's get into it. Governor Lee makes official call for special legislative session. Just when you think he couldn't disappoint you anymore as a Republican candidate. Bill Lee has finally made the official call for the special legislative session to begin on August 21st. The session should last around a week, although it could go longer. A statement from the governor's office notes that the purpose of the session is to keep Tennessee communities safe, support law enforcement and address mental health, all while preserving your constitutional rights. I believe it. Yeah, he preserved them real well during the pandemic, didn't he? Such a great, straight stalwart, stands up, makes promises, follows through. While many expect Lee to push for extreme orders of protection, also known as red flag laws, he only briefly mentioned guns as the list of focus items, of course, of course not, because everyone in the legislator, legislature, rather, you should know that if they've got their fingerprints on this, it's gonna hurt their reelection. It is. It's gonna hurt it terribly. And so I hope that people in the communities remember that. Uh, legislators already opted not to debate these orders of protection in the regular session. However, lawmakers could still propose such bills. There's so many bills being proposed right now, guys. They're gonna throw hundreds of bills at the wall. They're gonna wrap them all up in an omnibus bill. They're not gonna give us time to take a look at them. They're not gonna tell us what they're actually trying to do. This is all about keeping you in the dark. Make no mistake. Lee says lawmakers will focus on increased mental health resources and promotion of safe storage of firearms, along with additional safety measures related to the TBI and other law enforcement agencies. Please tell me how any of this would have stopped what happened at the school and why we are making decisions without even understanding the motivations of the person who did it in this isolated incident. I think that we, uh, I think that there has been some sort of isolated school shooting in the last 25 years, like maybe 10 of them. People going crazy, primarily almost always interpersonal conflict-related things, which is what was probably the case at Covenant School. I mean, we know this. This is why they wanna hide, hide and bury the manifesto. There was some kind of relationship between the shooter and somebody at the school, and they probably would reflect poorly on the school, and that's why they try to hide it. But instead of us focusing on the trans leftist shooter who shot up the Christian school, oh no. We must blanket the entire state with all kinds of revisions and laws, completely unnecessary. Groups such as the National Rifle Association, the National Association for Guns, and the Tennessee Firearms Association have called for legislators to oppose gun control laws and to bring a quick end to the legislative session. Dudley Brown, president of NAGR, said, "We expect Tennessee Republicans to stand firm in their defense of the Second Amendment and to vote to adjourn this meeting in August," which is what they should do. All these people like Lambretth and, and Jeremy Phazen, and, uh, it is just disgusting to watch them stand behind what Republican primary voters don't want and to, again, to pee in the faces of the Tennessee Republican Executive Committee, just like they did with closing the primaries. They don't, this group, if you ever wanted any more proof that leadership in, in Nashville does not listen to Republican voting constituency, and why we need more real conservative candidates to run for office, this could not be a better showcase. Republican lawmakers have discussed some proposals for gun control, including tax incentives for safe gun storage and a more streamlined process for background checks for those purchasing firearms, also while working to increase the number of beds available and state-run mental health facilities. BS. Next story. Governor Bill Lee's stance on gun control prior to being elected differs greatly from his current agenda. No, no, he wouldn't have lied through his teeth to get elected and then do something completely different, would he? He's a man of character. He's a good Christian. Prior to being elected as governor of Tennessee, a Tennessee citizen asked Bill Lee on Facebook Messenger his stance on gun control during the same time period. Lee sent a letter to the Tennessee Firearms Association members touting his Second Amendment support. Lee wrote, "This is common sense. Law-abiding citizens should not be punished for the actions of criminals." What, Lee? What's that, Billy? You changing your tune? Every time there is a tragedy. These are Bill Lee's words. I kid you not. Every time there is a tragedy, the first thing that happens is that politicians and the media politicize the issue and try to turn the conversation away from real solutions and into a discussion about how to take away our constitutional rights. It's the wrong conversation. Somebody should read Bill Lee his own damn words. "We've always had guns. We haven't always had mass shootings. We need to look behind the guns and try to get to the root causes." "I think I'm a woman and I'm a man because I'm psychologically deranged." Hint, hint. "Instead of taking the constitutional rights away of law-abiding citizens, there's a lot of political pressure to quote-unquote 'do something.' But every one of these cases, we have a case of someone who is breaking multiple laws." Well, you sound like a GOP primary voter, Billy. You been reading our mail? "Adding a new law won't solve the problem." Amazing. What a hypocritical liar. Through and through. Lee also expressed support for the arming of teachers, constitutional carry, campus carry and so forth, and opposed any bans or entire sets of weapons such as assault weapons. Prior to Lee's official call for the special session, he said he would sponsor several bills, including at least ones dealing with extreme risk protection orders, otherwise known as red flag laws, standing in sharp contrast to his campaign promises. Bill Lee may be many things, but a liar is one of them. He is just, he, he, he has completely misrepresented himself. Tell the truth when you run for office. Consider the, the focus shift of the special session made in Lee's official call released for public consumption. The Tennessee conservative will be closely watching the sneaky language that could potentially be slipped into other pieces of legislation, caption bills, that can infringe on Tennesseans' constitutional rights and we'll keep you informed. Hey, let's run this thing through a caption bill on a voice vote. That sounds like the Rhino Way. All right, guys, please do check out my friend Steve Abramowitz's podcast, Mill Creek View. Brandon Lewis is even gonna be on there for perhaps an extended cut here soon. Season one of Mill Creek View's CEO Special is out and can be viewed on YouTube, Rumble and Instagram or wherever you listen to your podcasts. A new episode comes out every Monday at 9:00 AM. Steve interviews great American business owners doing good business. Mill Creek View also has recently launched Mill Creek View Washington and Mill Creek View Florida podcasts if you'd like to get caught up on what's going on in those states. Steve is fantastic. He does keep up with what's going on locally in Tennessee. We have so few, uh, forward-focused conservative news-related outlets that you have to just keep up and support all of them. So do go to Mill Creek View Tennessee and check out my good friend Steve. And yours truly, I'll be on there, uh, here before too long, for better or worse. Next story. Putnam County Judge threatens parents with jail time to crack down on truancy problems. You know, I think it's always funny that the government threatens, harasses and harangues parents for any and all infringements, right? Teachers unions, the teachers. Well, your kids aren't in school. Your kids aren't following this law or not. Yet meanwhile, they spend about $144,000 in a student's lifetime, roughly $12,000 a year. They can't teach them to read or write. They indoctrinate them. They put them in unsafe environments. Where's the punishment for them? Why can't we haul principals and schoolteachers or who the hell ever else up in front of a judge and say, well, you know what? You got them for 13 years. They're functionally illiterate. You're gonna have to serve jail time. If it's good for the parents, it ought to be great for the government. Always accountability for the citizen, never accountability for the government. General Sessions and Juvenile Court Judge Stephen Randolph took to Twitter on Wednesday with a message for educators, parents and students about attendance in Putnam County schools. Does it matter? They can't read or write when they attend? In the video, Randolph stated it was quite possible parents could be incarcerated for 10 days at a time for unexcused absences as part of his plan to get parents to take the responsibility of getting their children to school on time seriously. Hey, Judge, why don't you do a campaign for like how to make the schools accountable for delivering what they're supposed to, to the taxpayers that paid them? Would you, could you get on that one? Could you get real motivated? Could you, could that get you all worked up as a government employee? Probably not. Probably not. Directly after this threat, Randolph states, uh, he is asking for parents to work with him to address truancy. Earlier in the video, Randolph stated that truancy leads to, uh, teen drug use, teen pregnancy delinquency and low self-esteem. That might just be public school attendance, Randolph, the red-nosed reindeer. Then said that teens who are truant become adults dependent on welfare and high rates of incarceration. Or they're not learning, learning enough skills to get a job after 13 years. Maybe it's the school causing the problem. We don't know these things. A school day is made up of about seven hours. And so for every unexcused absence that a kid has in school, they're gonna do seven hours of community service at our local recycling center. Oh, we can, we can bring in the Green New Deal with it, too. That's great. However, according to state law, there are no comprehensive definitions of excused absence, which leaves the district creating their own policies with regard to excused and unexcused absences. Excused absences are generally those that result from illness, death in the family. For parent provides a note, Randolph may not mention the fact that starting in 2018-19 year, state law requires schools use a progressive truancy intervention plan before the potential, uh, petitions of truancy in juvenile court are filed. To me, the whole summary of that story is the government is always so petulant, uh, to the taxpayers it serves, yet is so... They, they never hold themselves accountable. I would like to see a whole school or school system resign at once because they failed to meet any type of ROI for the taxpayer. Just hairy carry, you know? Just everybody just draw up the long knives and just get it over with. Uh, but there's never any accountability for the government. It is amazing. Next story. Nashville Police Department and Nashville mayor say they'll get an SRO in every elementary school, but make no commitment to a timeline. We'll get around to it eventually. Now, listen, these people probably don't know that the governor has just called an emergency session because this is what? An emergency. Apparently the people that were, you know, pretty close to all this don't think it's a big emergency. This past week, in a shift from prior statements, you know, politicians are always shifting, shifting in their pants, shifting out on the street, shifting in the Capitol, lots of shift going around. Lots of shift. Mayor John Cooper and Police Chief John Drake stated there will be an armed SRO in every elementary school eventually. Last month, the issue was raised when the department left over $5 million of resources on the table that had been earmarked for beefing up school security in the wake of the shooting at Covenant Elementary School by a crazy, left-leaning trans person. In June, reports indicated that even though Metro Council and Nashville parents were begging for SRO officers to come, officers to come regularly into elementary schools, the pushback conveyed reluctance on the part of the district as well as Mayor Cooper and the police department. Adrian Battle, Director of the Metro Nashville Police Services, I guess that's what that is, said that she was hesitant to place armed police in the elementary, uh, school in the same way they had a presence in every middle and high school in the district. Why? Feelings. I got feelings. I got very emotional feelings about policing. They're very emotional, very emotional issue. However, in one month's time, there has been a movement in the direction of eventually having a permanent police presence in elementary schools for the first time in their history. Good grief. All right, guys. For all these reasons and more, come in, Ruby. For all these reasons and more, just listening to the craziness that's going on in Tennessee government. Uh, you should come to the Conservative Candidates Academy, sponsored by the Conservative Candidates Academy, a proud sponsor of the Tennessee Conservative, to get the strategies and resources you need. Listen, if you look around at government, Ruby, come here. If you look around at government, and you're not happy with what's going on, how things are being handled, and you think you could do better, here's, here's a tip. You could.
Hi.
Say hello. This is Ruby Doobie. Where are we going this weekend?
Camping.
We're going camping.
But with not my sister because her was my mom somewhere.
This is accurate. This is accurate and true. Give me kisses. All right. Now, look, go, go back in the house. And you need to go use the bathroom. I can tell. Okay?
I love you.
I love you, too. Very professional around here at the Big Seven. Very professional, very professional. Back to what I was talking about. Um, yeah, hey, you get this for free, people. I don't take a salary. So this is, this is high-quality production. Um, if you think you could do a better job than these jokers, you can. Uh, come to the Conservative Candidates Academy, learn how. If you ever think you want to help someone running for office, if you are a GOP chairman or an officer in a patriot or a conservative group, please do send a contingency to the Conservative Candidates Academy. We have great speakers on the subjects of using social media to connect with voters, how to reach people at the mailbox with direct mail, uh, strategies for managing voter data. Uh, we'll also have, uh, information related to how to raise money for political office that yours truly will be teaching how to deal with a combative press, not that the left-leaning press would be competitive to conservative principles or candidates. Perish the thought because they are completely utterly and T, totally non-biased, right? And we're gonna talk about general strategy, uh, and also we will have, uh, Brian Ritchie come and talk a little bit about how to beat incumbents because God knows they need it, and lots more. ConservativeCandidatesAcademy.com. It will be power-packed. You will walk away with resources you need to win. ConservativeCandidatesAcademy.com. Don't wait till the last minute. Let so many people do. Guys, go ahead and book those tickets. And if you wanna be a table sponsor, you wanna be a table sponsor. If you just want to help us in this effort, uh, be a table sponsor. Come set up a table or buy a table sponsorship and don't even show up. It will not hurt my feelings. Next story. O'Connell and Raleigh head to runoff race. Metro Nashville Council gets more progressive after this week's election. Let's run it into the ground quicker up there. This week, Nashvillians selected progressive former city councilman and union favorite Freddie O'Connell and conservative businesswoman Alice Raleigh as the top two. Now, Raleigh and O'Connell will head to a runoff, uh, election in six weeks, where the winner will be chosen for a final vote. O'Connell has, uh, a well-known soft-on-crime, anti-Second Amendment position, as well as zoning policy positions that favor high-density urbanization, uh, of which has fielded some criticism. Imagine that. Conversely, Alice Raleigh's priorities are based on public safety and the freedom that brings, uh, to those who work in the city. Fiscal conservatism and lowering taxes, God knows they need it up there, to put more of people's hard-earned money back in their pockets. As a former teacher, she also supports schools that focus on higher-quality education, where parents are given voices to keep their kids safe while they're in the school. Specifically, Raleigh has commented about putting SROs in every Metro Nashville public school and is committed to taking steps that the mayor may make a reality, something Nashville parents have been begging for. Other news, Nashville Council saw progressives either keep their seats or add more to their ranks, uh, all of which happened to support O'Connell in the runoff. Sandra Supolvetta notes in her endorsement for O'Connell that he is focused on building Nashville for everyone, regardless of where you live, uh, your race or your legal status, come one, come all. Uh, it's, it sounds like Lee's, uh, Bill Lee's probably got a similar, uh, idea about it. Jeannie Welsh writes that under Twitter name, uh, No Pass For Fascism, uh, Delisha Porterfield prefers, uh, to refer to women as people with a uterus. Clown show. You wonder why, you get people like this in office that couldn't run a Wendy's, uh, night shift in Poughkeepsie. And you wonder why they run the city into the ground. Sean Parker is a, uh, self-identified Democrat socialist. In other words, Metro Nashville Council just got bluer. Tennessee Congressman condemns antisemitism of attempted school shooter only to find suspect is Jewish. Oh, that's a good one. Memphis police were dispatched to a Jewish school in Memphis last week when a would-be school shooter failed to gain entry to the school, uh, building and fired shots outside of the school instead. Um, do you think Jewish people aren't evil and sinful just like everybody else? If you think that, read the Bible. Read the Bible. Uh, they, they did a lot of bad things, as all humans do. Uh, it has been reported that the individual fled the pre-K-12 property in a vehicle, but authorities found and stopped his vehicle. When the male suspect emerged in the vehicle with a handgun, the police shot him. The man was taken to a local hospital in critical condition. Memphis PD declined to identify the suspect right away, but it's since been confirmed that the man was actually a former student of the school and found the motivation was personal in nature. Imagine that. We've seen that once before here recently, haven't we? As opposed to a racially motivated act of violence. Now, listen, all acts of violence are racially motivated, whether intrinsic, extrinsic, subliminal, subconscious, conscious, it's all race, all race-based. We know this. This contradicts the hate crime narrative that had initially been circulating about the event. And this is certainly not the first time left-leaning politicians have immediately jumped at the hate crime bandwagon. A Democrat US Representative, Steen Cohen, is one of the politicians who spread the false narrative. On a day of the attempted shooting, Representative Cohen's office published a press release and said antisemitism is on the rise in this country. Preach it, brother. I'm astonished and saddened at the apparent act of violent antisemitism that has come to Memphis. Are you really? Really? We all need to be on our guard against antisemitism and white nationalism. It's always antisemitism. It's always white nationalism. It's causing everything, everything. That trans woman that shot up the Covenant School was motivated primarily by white nationalism. We know these things. Despite publishing a secondary press release after the truth was found out about the shooter, Cohen has made no comment about the false narrative. That's, hey, that's old news. That's old news. What are you talking about? All right, guys. Now, this is entertaining stuff. This is award-winning. It's, I'm, I'm quite sure that I will get a Pulitzer Prize in journalism before you know it. It's coming down the pike. I can feel it. I think that we just got some mail here, uh, at the Lewis household. Ruby brought it to me. I haven't opened the box, but I'm pretty sure it is a Pulitzer Prize for journalism. And, uh, it's coming to yours truly because we do such good work. And if you want us to keep doing this good work, uh, please do go to tennesseconservativenews.com/support, hit that support button and donate. Somebody else will do it. That apparently is the opinion of 94% of conservatives on our subscriber list. Someone else will do it. You wonder why we have elected officials doing the things that they're doing with an R beside their name. You're part of the problem. Get off the freaking couch. Okay, lift up your hand in. I don't know if you keep your wallet on the right or the left side, men. You reach in there and you take that credit card out and you go to tennesseconservativenews.com/support. You hit that button and there'll be a little form. You type in your credit card and you hit go and you make a monthly contribution. If you're a woman, let me tell you how this works. You're a conservative Christian woman. You reach into the pocketbook. You take that credit card out. You go to tennesseconservativenews.com/support and you put some small amount of money in. Conservatives keep hoping somebody else is gonna do something while they complain on social media to their neighbors and they show up to potluck suppers to complain. Group complaining, social media complaining alone is not gonna make a difference. Please do go support our work. And you can mail your checks, as we've had some people do, to PO Box 625, Signal Mountain, Tennessee, 37377. PO Box 625, uh, Signal Mountain, Tennessee, 37377. So if you want to update your address books and if you give $50 or more, hold on a second. If you give $50 or more, you will get this Stop Feeding the Rhinos Tumblr, or if you give a recurring donation of $10 or more, because we need those recurring donations. Those truly are what keep us afloat. We appreciate the one-time contributions. We will never turn them down. But the consistency of those recurring donations help, and you'll also get this Proud Tennessee Conservative Koozie. Keep your beverages hot or warm as you choose, and if you give any amount whatsoever, we will send you this Stop Feeding the Rhinos bumper sticker. We will send you this Don't California My Tennessee bumper sticker, and we will send you a directory of all the evil creatures up in Nashville, uh, that are licking the boots of Bill Lee in order to get this, uh, special session going through, all of which you will, uh, find to be detailed next week, probably because they are the same characters, in the 2023 Rhino Report, which I know they will all be proud of and will probably, uh, hang up and put on their refrigerator at their kids so their kids can look at that and say, Daddy, I'm so glad that you never keep any of your campaign promises. What a way to go through life, full of ambition, but not character. Moving along to the next story. Good news segment. Boy, do we need it. Organization gives 2.3 million community gift to fund Bible curriculum in Hamilton County schools. A long-established organization in Chattanooga announced on Friday they will be contributing nearly 2.3 million to Hamilton County to cover the cost of the school's elective Bible program. The donation from Bible, uh, in the schools will cover the expenses of the program in its entirety. This is the 101st year that the organization has contributed to the optional Bible curriculum in the schools. The program consists of five courses taught in 32 Hamilton County middle and high schools. The study of the Bible is a literary and historical text, is approved by the Tennessee Department of Education. I'm amazed it even was. And was ruled legal by the US Supreme Court in 1963. We can teach a whole bunch of garbage, but it takes a special amount of effort to make sure that the, the, the book that our country was primarily founded on and the Judeo-Christian epic can be taught. This is how corrupting Marxism and everything else is that has crept into our failing public schools. The Bible program is offered as an elective to students in Hamilton County in partnership with Bible in schools. Students are given the opportunity to study the Bible, uh, about that. uh, about an educational environment, spending time learning to think critically about its cultural, historical, and literary facets. Consideration is also given to the influence of the Bible on society. Uh, Tom Glenn, Chairman of the Board of this organization, said, "We firmly believe that providing students with a comprehensive understanding of the Bible can enhance their cultural and historical knowledge." That's all she wrote, people. Woo! I hope you enjoyed that, cuz I did. Thirty minutes. We're gonna cut this short. I went a little long last time. Went a little long. So here's what's happening this weekend. As Ruby Doobie, which is what we call her, I used to call my oldest Spanky Doodle. And she does not like to be called Spanky anymore. That was short-lived. But Ruby Doobie and I are gonna go down, uh, to a campground, uh, and we're gonna have a great time, uh, in middle Tennessee uh, by a river. And we are going to go down the river. We're gonna get in a little boat of some description and go on a short little ride. They said that that is the best one for kids, which reminds me, I need to call that campground and book my boat. Thank you for reminding me. Uh, so we're gonna go down the little, go down the little river and then I may go, uh, I don't really wanna go to the Cumberland Caverns cuz I think I might be doing that next weekend. I'm a, Brandon Lewis is a tourist, is a Tennessee tourist-trap-loving individual. I like anything, anywhere. I love local, southern tourism. I'm easy to please. Just show me something different in rural America. Uh, I hate going to big cities. I mean, I don't hate it. I mean, I love Chattanooga, Tennessee. I do. I know my way around there. But for the most part, the traffic, the noise, the dirtiness, the panhandling, the litter, I don't like it. I like mid-sized cities. Mid-sized and small-sized cities, especially if they are tourist traps. And, uh, so we're gonna go down there. We're gonna hang out. I was so lazy, so lazy, uh, that I rented, uh, even though I have a camper, it's a teardrop, I rented a camper, which is well worth the money. It's all set up. I don't have to tow it. I don't have to pack it. I don't have to do nothing. I'm gonna take all my stuff down to the camper and put my stuff in the camper and camp. And so I've gotta start, even that takes a little bit of work. You gotta pack up the clothes, pack up the food, all the stuff. Uh, but it should be a good time. So that's what I'm about to go do. And I've got, oh my gosh, it's five twenty-three. I gotta get moving. I gotta take the dog to the kennel and I've got moments to spare. So I'm gonna have to cut this short. My wife is, uh, traveling, I think she is somewhere, uh, up in North Carolina, in the Highlands, uh, with my oldest, doing a little mother-daughter trip, okay? Very special trip, very meaningful trip. Uh, one of those kind, uh, that mothers and daughters take when, uh, young girls are turning into young women, if you know what I mean. And so I am not qualified to do that, so I'm here with the youngest, uh, because she does not require, uh, she does not require the sage advice uh, and the womanly wisdom of my wife. She just likes to be entertained by daddy. Uh, she told me today, she goes, uh, "I like people that make jokes all the time, daddy, and you make jokes all the time." I thought, well, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, on a side note, cuz I really do have to get going, um, thank you all for donating. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. Uh, last week and I think the week before last, unless I'm getting my weeks mixed up, have been the greatest outpouring of support for our organization. This October will mark three years that I've been doing this and I've never taken a paycheck from it. I mean, I've paid for my gas and a hotel room occasionally if I've had to travel for an event. I don't take anything from this. That's why often when people ask me to go speak or do things, sometimes I just have to say no because the, between my family and moving out of my old office and into a new office and moving out of an old house and into a new house and managing my business and my life and everything else, it just gets to be more than I can deliver. And I just have to tell people no, which I always wanna say yes, and I typically do, which is what gets me in trouble. So I apologize if I do have to say no. It's just part of it. But I do love you guys. I appreciate your support. You are keeping us afloat. It is, uh, very rewarding to get it. And I'm, I'll say this last thing and then hop off. Uh, when I was growing up, I was never told, not once that I can recall, uh, I'm proud of you, uh, good job, great work. And so after a while, I just learned, uh, that all of my confidence and all of my all of the approval that I would ever need had to come from within. And I convinced myself I didn't need it. Until I really went to move with my father and that's when I kinda started getting, getting some of that. But you know, he'd never been to school and so he didn't know a lot of what I was going through, but he was proud of me nonetheless, very proud. And, um, so when people come up to me and they tell me they're proud and they appreciate it and keep up the good work, it makes me uncomfortable. It makes me uncomfortable. I feel weird. It's some kind of, I'm sure if I spent, uh, you know, several hours with a psychiatrist, they could explain why. Uh, but I appreciate the words of encouragement, uh, the fact that what we're doing here at this publication is meaningful to so many. Um, and you mean a lot to me. So thank you. Thank you for all that you do. Um, I always appreciate your emails, your letters in particular that come in the mail. I love mail. Uh, and all the support. So, uh, guys, we gotta keep our eyes and ears open for this special session. I'm telling you, corrupt, it is, money and power are so corrupting and people will, they will make all the promises in the world on their campaign website while they run for office and in front of GOP groups. And then they go up to Nashville and they just do the exact opposite of the will of the people that sent them there. All, it's almost like consistent, except for a few. We've got a few holdouts up there. And then they're not in leadership because you can't climb up there unless you abandon your principles. You can't. It's virtually impossible. And I hope that changes one day. And that's why the Conservative Candidates Academy and what they're doing, uh, is so important. So do visit ConservativeCandidatesAcademy.com and try to come to that. Guys, that's all I got. I better run out of here. I'm not gonna get the dog there on time. I'm trying to do too much. See, this is what I do. I try to do too much. I'm always in a hurry. Brandon Lewis with the Tennessee Conservative, uh, TenCon Big Seven. I'll see you next week. Take care.